Carl, don't worry about standing.
Apologize, Mayor, I didn't have that queued up for this.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's fine, let's just, I'll just lead us in and then we'll get moving. I pledge allegiance to the
United States and to their public
Not our smoothest performance, but it will work. Welcome, everybody, to our city council goal-setting meeting. As you all know, we have three of these. This is our first night of that, of those. We have Sarah Singer-Wilson, who's going to be leading our council through our goal-setting. I'm looking really forward to this. Obviously, we have a good blend on this council of some experienced counselors and some that are coming on with fresh ideas and perspectives. I'm looking forward to this as being an opportunity for all of us to kind of talk about what we're passionate about, what our individual goals are, and to bring that into kind of a collective vision for the city, that we are able to provide our, our staff with a bit of a roadmap, so to speak, to kind of run down and tackle these important issues facing us as a community, as well as kind of just an overall vision as a council for where we want to go and lead and, 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 and take our community over the next couple of years. So, with that, I just, I'm very excited to participate in the meetings over the next couple of nights. And I'm kind of looking forward to this. I get to kind of turn the meeting over. So Sarah, I'll let you introduce and take it away, and thank you, everybody, for joining us.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and thanks, everybody, for being prompt and getting here, whether you're on the road still or, or here with us, from coming from your homes or your desk. I'm gonna go ahead and-
Can Carl mute his phone?
Yeah, Sarah, if you, if you don't mind, I'm gonna jump in. Carl, would you mind muting your phone from your end and then just unmuting when you'd like to participate in the meeting? Perfect, thank you so much. Sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I was just clicking on mute as you guys were saying that, so we're, we're all on the same page here, that'll make it easier to hear. Well, I'm just really pleased to be working with the City of Sandy this year on, on helping you to chart some goals for the year ahead. And we've done a lot of prep work to get ready for this series of workshops. And so I just want to begin by taking us through the agenda and just kind of going over some of the outcomes that we've laid out for this work. And, and, and just how we're gonna get there. So, one thing I'll mention is that these are workshops, and so we don't have public comment as part of this. And so we're glad that any members of the public are here listening. But there, there won't be a chance for public comment until this comes back to the council to approve during one of their regular meetings, so just want to share that upfront. We will be, the group will be going into some breakout rooms this evening in the workshop, and so any members of the public who are participating at that time will just stay in the general session, and we'll be able to hear the report out from the breakout groups when we all come back together. So, I'll note that when it happens, but just want to make sure everybody's aware of how this process works. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen and show you guys our agenda for tonight. Let me zoom in on this. So, one of the tools that I use to virtually facilitate is to be able to, or is this tool called Mural. And this allows us to be able to kind of all stay on the same page graphically as we move through the work. So, some of the outcomes that we've set for tonight, first one, I would just want to make sure we all get oriented to the goal-setting process. We want to get better acquainted with the team members and learn about the individual communication styles, strengths, and values. We're gonna review and recognize the accomplishments of the team from this last year and just set the tone for success as we start to think about goals for the coming year. We want to also develop an understanding of the current community context for the goal-setting. So, that's where some of that background information may come in, into play, and we'll work in small groups to, to map some of this out. So, how we're going to get to those outcomes. Excuse me. So, first, we're going to just do some quick introductions and just set our intentions for this process that lies ahead of us. We'll review our roles and establish some ground rules for this process that will guide us and, and keep us on track throughout. We're gonna do our warm-up and team-building activity, again, to better understand those communication styles and, and get you guys working together as a, as a team. Because it's not, it's not much use to try and work on goals if we can't work together to get them accomplished. So, I want to make sure you guys come out of this as a strong team. We'll do a quick celebration of progress. We'll take a short break at 7:30. So, if I, I, I'm pretty good about keeping on track when, and watching the clock. But if for any reason I miss it and somebody is really uncomfortable, please feel free to send me a message in the chat or raise your hand. I want to, I want, we do need a break and give our eyes a break from the screen. Then we'll shift into that context setting, so we'll do the environmental scan. You guys will work in small groups to talk about the, the current community context. We'll all come back together and have a discussion and a recap of that. And then at 8:45, we'll start to wrap things up, gather up any questions about the process or the next steps, and then do a quick reflection checkout exercise, and then have, be done promptly here at 9:00. Let's see, before we get into roles and ground rules, I just want to take us through the process that we're, that we've laid out here. So, first thing is, we're gonna set, set some intentions. And again, some goals that we have for this is just to identify shared goals and priorities. That's our primary objective here. Also, you'll notice this is gonna be a different process. We're trying to refresh the goal-setting process. You have a lot of new members on the team. You have a big project coming up that's your comprehensive plan update, and so we want to do a vision statement. And so the, the visioning exercise is gonna look a little different. And so anyhow, we want to make sure that this is, it's gonna be a different process from what you've maybe seen in the past. And, and the goals might come out looking a bit different, which should be the case. You've got a, a new team as part of this. So, one of the other things that, one of the intentions is, we want to make sure that there's clear roles and strong relationships. We want to build some camaraderie amongst the team in unity, so that once you have your goals, you can move them forward. The second part of the process, these steps all build on each other. So, we will be aligning with the city's vision. We want to get into a future state of mind and imagine the vision for the City of Sandy, and really think about what's the direction that we're headed in. We'll work on this piece of the exercise tomorrow night. One of the other things, we'll do this this evening, which is to look back, reflect, and celebrate. So, review those accomplishments from 2020, and again, just prime the mind with success. Where are we headed next? What do we want to build on? And then give some recognition to, to the team and what they were able to accomplish. The other piece we'll work on tonight is reviewing that context, and so thinking about the challenges that we face, the opportunities or strengths we can leverage going forward, and then thinking just about how 2020s maybe changed the environment and our, and community needs. What, you know, what's rising to the surface as priorities? This exercise really gets people thinking, and you'll already start to see some ideas emerging. So, it really segues nice into this, the idea phase, the ideation phase. And so this is where we'll start to think about what goals or strategies would help to move us towards the vision. So, we'll be working on this tomorrow after we get through that vision exercise. You know, what new ideas should we consider? Is there anything that we can keep building on? And the idea phase, it kind of, it's like just a giant brain dump to some extent, and it, it can look a little messy as we start to get them all mapped out, but it starts to come into focus. And you are able to see, you know, we, we'll have some discussion around which ideas should move forward as shared goals. And, and we'll start to refine those even further, to make sure that we're being clear about the desired outcome and, and, and understand what's motivating the goal. Then we'll think about, you know, what are the supporting actions? And are there any metrics that, you know, might be useful to think about in measuring progress? The last part of this, in our final workshop, we'll start zeroing in on, and identifying the plan, making the plan. So, we'll confirm consensus or, and/or team agreement on each goal. And then we'll do some prioritization. Once we have the goals lined up, we'll do a prioritization exercise where the council and staff will participate in an exercise, and then just the council will, will share their priorities and be really clear about what they want to move forward first. And this piece is really important, because this process segues right into your budget process. And this information helps staff figure out what should be going in the budget, so that when they bring you the proposed budget, it's aligned with the council's goals. And then the last piece of this is, we'll have some discussion around how to implement and report progress. What sort of expectations does the council have in, in receiving updates and, and reporting progress throughout the year? So, any questions so far about this process, as it's been outlined here? Zoom out, so you can see it all. Are we all, all good so far? Okay, great. Well, let's go back. I want to first talk about some roles. So, my role here is to guide the group through the conversation, to help you stay focused on the agenda and achieving your outcomes. I'll be using the ground rules to assist the group, so, you know, enforcing those from time to time if I, if, if we need a reminder. I do it with good humor and, and, but it's all in, it's all to help keep us on track, so I, please, don't be offended. But at any time, I just will set the ground rules together, and I'll try to hold the group to it as we move through the process. The council's role is really to just, you guys set the policy for the community and bring the community perspective forward. Anything else that you want to add to this and is part of your role, council?
I mean, it, it's pretty much in the set the policy, but you know, we're, we're the general vision. You know, we represent our neighbors here in the community and set a general vision and path forward for staff to implement here, here in our community.
Okay. All right, excellent. And then staff's role. Staff is here also to share their ideas. They're immersed in this work day in and day out, and so they play a really important role in this conversation as well. So, we, I am inviting staff to share their ideas and their experiences and their perspectives, because that helps to make sure that the goals are realistic. You know, we, we want to hear the policy level, but we also want to make sure it lines up with what, what's feasible and, and what, what can we do? So, staff is here to also provide that technical expertise in the conversation. So, council, I hope you, you see them here as a resource, as you would in any other meeting, to be able to ask questions and, and, and help you in, in guiding that policy. So, those are the roles, as we've outlined them. And now to shift into some ground rules. So, for virtual meetings, the first one is, is really simple. We want to be patient with the facilitator, number one, and the technology. I'm gonna be shifting around quite a bit to keep you guys engaged and, and making sure that you can see the big picture as we move through the exercises. So, please be patient with the technology. It's, it's been working well so far. Knock on, knock on something lucky and, and just, but ask for help if you need it anywhere or any, any place along the way. You can send a message in the chat to myself or to Jeff, or Patti will also be helping to, to field any questions. And so, please, if you need something, please ask for it. And then at this point, I want to just ask the, the group, you guys have, you may have some ground rules that you use during your meetings. But what, what do you need to be able to just engage in this conversation and to make sure that we're able to achieve these outcomes that we've set? So, any, any ground rules that the group would like to propose, and I'm gonna stop the share for a second, so we can see everybody's faces.
I guess I'll, I'll go. You know, I would just say general respect for one another and provide everybody space to be heard and, you know, let each person speak and not speak over one another.
Okay. Wanted to start with others. Is that promptly is for any others?
I would add, because there, there is a lot of history that brought us to this point, about, we do have a lot of new folks that we, we keep that history in mind and that direction, but we're also open to changes, you know, based off whatever. That just be open to maybe a new course if we need to.
Okay, excellent. Open, be open to changes and a new course while respect, while keeping the history in mind.
I would also say terminology that's being used by staff or by experienced counselors that have heard terminology, making sure that we pause or get called out on. Just, you know, don't be afraid, for those that don't know what a acronym means, there's acronyms in every business, and this one has a lot of them. But just ask, because I'd rather have everyone be on the same page than not be afraid to ask what that acronym is. So, there's no bad question when it comes to this, like, please, we want to make sure you understand everything. And I'll do the same thing if I don't know something, you know, and, and, because there's a lot of stuff out there.
Yes, excellent rule. Thank you for raising that one. What else comes to mind? What else do we need? Yes, Council Walker.
I think I have a tendency to, you know, want to get down into the weeds when, and I'm really supposed to be flying at 30,000 feet. So, I appreciate being reminded to stay out of the weeds, or let's, you know, what do you pull up or whatever the appropriate air, airplane terminology is to kind of stay big picture here.
Okay, yes, thank you. Yeah, and occasionally, if I find the council going down that direction, I, I may ask a question as to, you know, is this, is this the level we want to be? And I'm sure staff will, will jump in on those as well. And again, to keep you focused on, on the outcomes and what's the outcome we're trying to achieve. What else? Anything else come to mind? Yeah.
I don't know how this would represent, but to stay more local thought process than global thought process. You know, we're here for the City of Sandy and to think local for the City of Sandy and what we're able to represent and lead on.
Okay, so think local and keep Sandy in mind and what we can impact here.
I'd like to add something if I can. I, I just pulled over, so I should be quiet.
You are, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I think it's important that, like we talked about, being respectful and understanding of, of the different personalities. But I think we need to also be upfront and honest with where we are. Sometimes we hide things, because we don't want to embarrass or, that's not the word, to offend. And just knowing that that honesty is not to offend, but that it is to clarify the thought and the issue. I think it's important. Otherwise, some of these things don't come out.
Yeah, excellent rule. Would it be okay to add to that, to be upfront and honest and to just, and to also understand that it's okay to disagree? Because occasionally, we may disagree, and that's, that's fine, too.
Sure, no, great.
And we can do it respectfully, so. I've never worked with a council that 100% just agrees on everything, so I don't, I'm sure you're a very, a very good group that gets along well, but I, I don't anticipate you're gonna agree 100% on everything. So, we'll do it respectfully and, and understand that that's just part of the process. The other one that I might propose is to assume positive intent. As I talked with you guys in your interviews, you all had shared, you know, stories of why you got involved, or why you ran, or why you're passionate about this work. And I think it's really easy, especially when we get into a space where we might disagree about something, to forget that we're all here for, for good reasons, for good intentions. I've also never worked with a group where people are just out for world domination or, you know, have, have evil in mind. Like, people are there because they care about their community. So, I think it would be a safe rule to say that we can move through this process, assuming that everybody has the best of intentions, and to remember to assume that. So, is everybody okay with that? All right, I'm gonna add that one. And then the last one I'd like to suggest would be, this just, it will help us later on down the line. But when we are getting into the goal refinement process and, and get, starting to come to agreement on what the goals are going to be, I will reach out to the council, to each of you individually, it kind of, not call you out, but in a nice way, call you out to make sure that there's either a majority, that there's consensus in the group in wanting to move a goal forward, or there's at least a majority that wants to move a goal forward. Sometimes the end of this process can get a little messy with the group, and, and you don't want to end up with a goal that only one person supports, because then you have staff working on that. It comes back to the council and there's not. And then it may get shot down, because everybody does, wasn't in agreement with it in the first place. So, when we get to that, at, at the end, I don't want it to seem like I'm, you know, trying to micromanage the process, but I do want to make sure that you guys are in agreement on the goals that you're putting forward and are giving good direction to staff. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, great. The other thing that I'll mention, I'm gonna be recording all of this in the mural board, and I'm happy to send you guys the link. If you want to follow along virtually, you can, and if you're not, if technology is not your thing, I'm gonna screen share often, so that you'll be able to see it. But if you want to participate, it's kind of a fun way to, to watch, especially if you have a second screen. So, I'm gonna go ahead and send that in the chat. And you can follow along here. All right, so with that, I'm gonna finish up the, this last ground rule up here. And while I'm doing that, I just want you to, again, think about, the first part of this is about setting intentions. And so as part of the introductions, or just around the, the group with staff and with the council, and just, again, think about why we're here. We, we just went over all of these outcomes that we hope to achieve, and here to set the direction. Think about your roles. Think about kind of the year you've had in the community and, and where you hope to go moving forward in 2021. And so I just, you know, invite you to just take a moment and think about what your intention is for this process. I think it's best to go, if we're gonna spend three, two evenings together and a Saturday, part of a Saturday, let's make sure that we're moving through this work intentionally, so that we get the best possible outcome for the community. So, just think a moment about your intention, and then we'll go around and have everybody just do a quick intro and share their intention, and then we'll, we'll jump into our work, our, our progress celebration. All right, does anybody want to share first? Kick us off. Otherwise, I'm just gonna go in order of your Hollywood squares on my screen. So, and I'll start in the top corner. Counselor Sheldon?
I was just gonna pull the trigger, because I figured I had to be some first somehow anyways. Rich Sheldon, I, I guess, is there certain things you want us to hit on our intro?
We're gonna do some team building later, so you, you'll have a chance to share more. So, right now, let's just share the intention.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, my intention is, I'd like to, as we move forward with this, I'd like to make sure we intend to keep, kind of still Carl's thunder, but keep our, our local citizens in mind and our current citizens in mind. That's really where I'm at.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hokinson?
Sorry, lost the mouse playing over there with the mural. I think in so, so many intentions, but I think really it's, it's to really tie what we're doing back into the policies that were done a long time ago, under maybe several city administrations before. But to make sure we've got that clear governance and that we're identifying the holes where they exist as we go forward. You know, if we end up with a goal that's not clearly tied to a policy, I'd like to flag that, you know, to make sure we can address that, and make sure that we're setting ourselves up for several years of good governance.
Okay, excellent. Jordan?
I did not intend to move something on the board, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'll fix it.
I think I was able to undo it, so that was not my intention. I've been really looking forward to this. This is a, you know, as Sarah said, a, a new process for us. And I think after a couple of years here with the city, it's been, I think, something we've been excited about, trying to have the council set a vision and conduct a goal-setting that I think is a little more deliberate and gets us at a higher level and, and allows the council to really set that strategic direction for us and, and put a little purpose and intention behind our work and what we do. I think as staff, too, I think going through these goal-setting processes every couple of years does kind of invigorate staff. We like to hear from council, we like these check-ins. It does give us a chance to, you know, share, you know, progress on all the work that they've been doing. And it does, it gets us excited about, you know, the year or two ahead of us and all the things that we're gonna accomplish together. Elections sometimes be a little bit of a roller coaster. And I think goal-setting coming right after that is just a great opportunity to get to know one of, one another, get staff more familiar with the new faces on council, and also feed right into a budget process, where we're also gonna see a lot of each other going through the budget. So, yeah, I guess that's a lot, that's a mouthful to say. But I really look forward to some great goals coming out of this, and also just having a, a great, clear vision from the city council on an overall direction for the city.
Excellent, thank you, Jordan. Counselor Walker?
Thank you, Sarah. Um, I skimmed through, I didn't get through all 500 pages of the attachments. I'd already looked at the pool plan and stuff, but I, I was also looking at the previous year's goal-setting sessions from 2015 to 17, 17 to 19, and then the current ones. And first of all, it's just inspiring to see how much we've gotten done since 2015. We've got a lot of the past goals accomplished, and really, that changed, that changed our city and, and the experience that our residents have. So, you know, bravo to the staff and past city councils who have kind of, you know, put their, you know, heart into getting all that done. When I looked at the, the handout that came, just that Jordan had, what was kind of a little bit surprising was, you know, just so many things, so many projects. And I kind of have heard that that's part of the, you know, that, that tends to be a little bit of an issue, I think. I've heard it from some of the city council folks of like, so many different initiatives out there. And I think that there's, you know, when you're trying to do 15 things good, rather than focusing in on five things, it's really challenging. It's hard to do 15 things well, and it's hard to do, you know, five of those 15 things well, if you're trying to still take care of the 15. And so I guess what I would hope could come out of this, after looking at that huge, you know, first of all, you know, wonderful aspirational list of, of goals there in that project memo, is just kind of maybe, maybe there's, maybe it's okay to drop a couple of those off the list and focus, you know, get, get the, get the city focused on the highest priority ones, because I think, you know, it's important that we be able to do well, what the, the, you know, do the goals that we, that are the highest priority well, rather, you know, equality over quantity, I guess. So, I just kind of, you know, hope that we can kind of focus in, rather than trying to be, you know, I, I'm all for multitasking, but there is, there's a drawback to that on, on staff time, on our budgets and everything else. So, just trying to focus some on, on the highest priority things that really, that Sandy really needs us to focus on.
Thank you, Counselor Walker. Mayor, what's your intention for this process?
Thank you, yeah. I'd say a couple of things. One is, is just for us as a council to get used to working with each other and kind of know how each other flows and, and just to be really a productive working unit. And then the other is a lot of what Kathleen said, you know, one of the things that I was proud of over the course of the last two years was going over a lot of the old goals. And yeah, I mean, a lot of, a lot of good stuff getting done, but I feel like we did a really good job two years ago of really narrowing down what our goals were from where they were previous years, where we just had a lot of bullet points on several different pages, and we really got some concrete categories. And sure, there were some like intentional under, under traffic, you know, there was 362nd Bell Street. You know, there was planning on a bypass feasibility study, but for the most part, you know, we came down to, you know, about five. And then at the mid-year, we came up with, I think, an additional two to that. But I do think, you know, to Kathleen's point, we do want to have some real high-level, intentional, trackable goals, not a lot of them. And then really trust our staff and work with our staff to accomplish those goals, you know, and to make sure that we're holding ourselves as a council and as a staff accountable to reaching them. So just, yeah, you know, to become a good working group and then, uh, and then get some really good intentional goals to drive our city and our day-to-day activity with.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Pete Pitzel, did I get it right?
Pete's old.
I second guessed. All right.
Yeah. So I'll just, uh, echo a lot of what other people have said. So I guess that's the advantage of kind of going in later in the cycle. You can say those things. I'll just echo those. So some of the things though would be, uh, to focus on key goals, um, and not be, you know, have too many projects out there. We can get overwhelmed by that, um, in, in, uh, but some of those we recognize are in different areas and different parts of the, the city or the staff there. To kind of reset, and then we've heard that before, kind of looking what we've already gone back and done. I think it's very healthy to see, uh, what we've done, uh, and sit and pause and go, wow, the city did get a lot done in the last two or four, six, 10 years, whatever. And look at that and go, look at what we can do in the going forward in the future. So part of it being a dream building experience, not with just us as counselors, but here with the staff has to stay. And one of the things I brought up with you, sir, is something I've asked at every single planning, um, session from the very beginning was, I want to, you know, know what the staff have to say. They're the professionals in what they dream and dream big and how we can help incorporate some of those things in as we align those with our goals as council, um, in doing that, having, um, direction and mission statement, uh, part of that. So that we are have something to go back to and go, this is, um, where we're going as, um, uh, a city. And so we can keep from getting too far off track, um, in that, not just during this time, but also in the next two to four years. So.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Um, Tanya.
I was just going to echo kind of some things that, um, Counselor Pitzel said. And I'm excited to be a part of the process and to come up with a vision to help us have a clear understanding of what the council's goals are and then how we can work together, build relationships and to accomplish those goals with a direction for our department so that we know how to support and, um, meet and succeed.
Excellent. Thank you, Tanya. Angie.
So I'm the HR manager here. Um, so I get very excited about stuff like this because this is just right in the wheelhouse from the standpoint of having clear missions and goals because the staff then can do their job to accomplish those. So for me, it's being really deliberate in what we do and with the goals that are set that we can as staff support that and help things move forward in, in, in a continuous motion. So.
All right. Thank you, Angie. Jeff.
Yeah, I think it's already been said. I'm, I'm really excited about this. Um, I know that all seven of the council members care deeply about the community and they all have great ideas for, how to make Sandy an even better place. So I'm just looking forward to see how all seven of those points of view are going to synthesize into a common vision and intention.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Um, Counselor Smallwood.
I had a sneaky suspicion I might be next. I don't know why. Sense maybe. Um, so, uh, to spare the redundancy, because everything that everybody has said, of course, is, is, are fantastic. So I'll say something a little bit different in that, uh, my intent and what I would like to see come out of this goal setting session, um, would be also, um, you know, that we just continue to make sure that Sandy being one of the fastest or was at least prior to, to some of the recent, you know, pandemic and various things, being one of the fastest growing cities in Oregon, that, that we continue to make goals and decisions that allow Sandy to be a progressive city. Um, and, and that we're going forward, uh, with our decision-making and goals and, and, and working together and not going backwards.
All right. Thank you. Um, Tyler.
I, I didn't have Counselor Smallwood's, uh, sixth sense there and couldn't find my unmute button. Well, you know, I'll echo everyone else and say I echo everyone else's comments. But, you know, beyond that, I'm a big fan of SMART goals that, you know, are measurable and attainable. And, um, the mayor indicated that we kind of moved away from the long bullet point goal style that we had previously in a more narrow focus, which I really appreciate. Appreciated this biennium. So I'm looking forward to, you know, another round of, um, attainable goals that staff can work towards. That also just set us up for a successful budget process.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. Um, Counselor Exner.
I also didn't have the six cents, so he got me sleeping and eating. I appreciate what's been said so far. I think that that's right on. I might add, I will add to not repeat, uh, what I heard just so far. First is, um, I think that a lot of the things that we've been doing in the last few years has been piecemeal and that we have not done as good a job as we should, could about putting it all together into a composite that really makes sense, smart. And not so much that we put it all together, but that we find ways for that to fit together. And I think that's really important. Uh, so some of our planning would be interconnected with the other plant, planning that's going on, which leads me to number two, which is we have a tremendous number of plans and actions on our table. Rather than to let them slide, I think we need to accomplish them, to finish them off, get them on the done table. So we can move forward with what we have been trying to do here for the last several years. And I think it's really important. And then for me, I think the best bet for that is to be very communicative so that we talk to each other a lot. And so that even though maybe we know, we think we know that people have understood where our position is or where my position is, your position, so on, but also that, uh, we do know what it is. And then finally, I guess I would say, let's be as transparent as possible. Nothing worse than being misunderstood and then not communicating that you need to be more clarified with your opinion or with your point or with where we are and how we got there. So those would be my, and then also, uh, I really want to emphasize getting, uh, to be this as a team. I really think that's important. So, which I think we are pretty much in that position already. Certainly I feel that way with the staff and, uh, I look forward to making sure that it's part of that with the, all the council.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Exner. Um, let's see, a couple more staff members. Uh, Greg Brewster.
Yeah. Hi. So, um, yeah, I, um, I've been through a couple of these here and, uh, they get better and better, uh, each time. I think I've only been through two here and I'm real excited here to see how, uh, how things are going to go here. Both, uh, short-term and long-term goals kind of coming together, uh, setting kind of the vision and, uh, building blocks for how we're going to continue to grow and change over the upcoming years. I'm excited to, uh, see what, uh, what council has, uh, in terms of goals and, uh, start working through, uh, staff and council and seeing how, uh, how we can come to, uh, some agreement or which ones take priority and, and just start forming and shaping it here. And so, um, I'm always one that tries to, uh, find a healthy balance of, uh, things that are not just, um, short-term attainable, but things that, you know, set the vision for, uh, years to come. And I, I like hearing all different sides here and, and kind of just seeing what comes of it.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Um, Andy, how?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I have my power out already this evening, so no camera. You would just see the night. Um, I look forward to tonight. The transit department's been very busy the past, uh, several years. And we've wrapped up some big construction projects. We've replaced seven vehicles, which is our peak fleet. We're in really good shape. As the current city council knows, we wrapped up a transit master plan in April. So we intend to spend this biennium mapping out our next couple of years. So tonight, uh, my intention is to listen very closely to the goals of this council and be sure that as I'm mapping out, uh, the future for transit, I'm doing it, um, in ways that meets the goals they set for us tonight. So thank you, and I appreciate you taking these three hours tonight to help us, uh, plan out our futures for our departments.
Thank you, Andy. Um, Ernie Roberts.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ernie Roberts. I'm the, the chief of police here in Sandy. And I was, um, um, back to Tyler, what Tyler had said. I think for me, and it's, uh, the attainable portion was, uh, really big for me. As the, as a department head, I think that we all, all of the department heads have their own set of goals that they have within their departments that they're trying to achieve. And it's, uh, sometimes a, a really hard balance, um, to make sure that we're achieving those goals. And at the same time, we need to do whatever, um, we can, um, to help achieve those council goals. Because in some way, shape or form, that is of, of course, going to involve, um, at some point in time, all the departments to work together. So I'm excited about it to, uh, hear what's gonna, uh, that what comes out of this. And, uh, just want to make sure that, um, I do everything I can to help, uh, the council achieve those goals.
Thank you, Chief. Um, let's see, Kelly O'Neil.
Yeah, let me see if I can get this to work. I'm trying it on my phone. I was trying to have my wife out with the kids. I had a marathon four-hour planning commission last night. I was up pretty late. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So yeah, I think, I think one of my goals, as you, as you can see, um, from the report or from the summary that was sent out is my department's been tasked with a lot of big goals over the last three to four years. And, um, one of the main ones is the comprehensive plan, as we all know. And I would, and I really hope from this process that we can really make a vision for the comp plan and move forward with achieving the goals that I set in the document and hopefully not make any more for my department over the next two years. Um, I do agree with Kathleen that I would rather achieve the goals that we already have, um, in a really good fashion instead of adding more and doing them, you know, less than spectacular. Um, and then my only other thing I wanted to add was that over the last 10 years since I worked in Sandy, there's been quite a roller coaster of, people that feel that we're not business friendly enough and then feel that we're too developer friendly. And this goes back and forth. It's like a, um, it's kind of a roller coaster. And I hope that people look at the audit that Jordan had performed for my department, my, by Morgan CPS. And I hope they, uh, can learn some things from that audit. And I'm really hoping that I can get some direction from council on what they would like to see, um, based on that audit so that we can kind of lay that to rest hopefully. Um, and really get focused on our task at hand, which is making Sandy better, um, and not so much focused on, um, the day-to-day operations of my department. So I'm really, I'm really hopeful that we can move forward in a positive way and accomplish some of the goals that, uh, Morgan CPS laid out in that document.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Um, Sarah from the library.
Thank you. Um, I have very simple, I want to assist the city of Sandy in moving forward, um, and continuing to be a great place to, to work and to live.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. And then I want, I am assuming MW is maybe the public works director. Yes. Hi there.
Howdy. Um, I like batting last. Um, yeah, I think, um, you know, just based on, I've seen a lot of these goal setting sessions, as you can well imagine. Uh, and, uh, I think the one we did two years ago was good, but I think there's a tendency, and it's, it's not a bad thing for staff to like, okay, we had a new counselor, council, we had a new mayor, we had new city manager. So the, uh, kind of the, uh, desire is to say, well, let's show, you know, everybody what we can do. And so I do think at least, you know, we did bite off more than we can chew in several respects. So, you know, I think it's good to recognize that and, and say, okay, you know, we got, we have a lot of it done and a lot of it's in progress. But, um, I think we can do a better job with the limited staff that we have if we do focus on a couple of, uh, achievable, attainable goals.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody for sharing those intentions. And I, I've been writing them down and, uh, in the mural board and we'll take that really to heart as we move through the activities to make sure that we continue to, to work through all of this with intention. So the next part of this, um, I want to go ahead and talk through some of those accomplishments and progress from 2020. And so to do this, I just want everybody, we're, we're just going to spend about 15 minutes on this, um, 15 minutes or less. And so I just want you to think about something, a project, an initiative. 2020 was interesting. There was a lot of, uh, response to fires and COVID and social justice things, all sorts of interesting challenges that communities face. So it doesn't have to be, um, necessarily pertaining to a specific goal. It could be just anything that the city responded to or an initiative or, um, or it could be goal related. So something that, something that you're proud of, that you'd like to share and recognize from, from 2020. And maybe, uh, to get us started, I'm going to just, if you want, type it up and just put it in the chat. And then I'll just kind of call on each of you, um, to just share a, a few words about yours. And I will, I'll be able to just take all that text and, and move it over to the mural board. So take a moment and, uh, an accomplishment or something that you're particularly proud of.
And it doesn't have to be something that was finished.
No, it can just be something that was, that progress was, was made. Forward movement in some area.
Sarah, did you want everybody to put it in the chat or you only wanted it in the chat so we can remember it?
Uh, no, everybody put it in the chat if you can.
Gotcha.
In a place where you can do that. Um, so I, I grabbed Tyler's first. So Tyler, tell us about yours.
Uh, so the pay equity and compensation study was, uh, an internal initiative, you know, for a very long time that just got put on the back burner year after year after year. Um, we had some serious compression issues with, uh, the pay ranges and sort of a lack of a comprehensive review for a number of years. And so that was a big accomplishment to actually get that, um, completed and implemented and get the buy-in from council and have, you know, a real, real exhaustive look at our, uh, compensation and benefit package for our employees. And then, um, the DEI training that, you know, council made, um, a commitment moving forward to, um, you know, racial equity and, and diversity equity and inclusion within our community. And so we've sort of trickled that down to staff and with Angie's help, I hope I didn't steal her thunder with what she's typing. Apologies, Angie. But just getting that kicked off with training for all of our staff, uh, and moving forward with that.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. Uh, let's see, who is next? Uh, Counselor Hokinson. You put, we survived 2020 thus far. Anything else you want to say about that?
Well, I added another one because Jeremy didn't call it out, but you know, the Sandy net was ahead of its time and was a huge benefit to pretty much everybody within the city boundaries and some outside. So.
Yes, definitely.
Things like this video conference possible.
Yes, just working with the community last weekend who's wishing they had something like Sandy net. They actually talked about you guys as an example of, uh, how to provide good access to internet to their community. Um, let's see, next we have up here, uh, Jeff launching the new website. Anything else you want to say about that?
You know, just really proud of it. Uh, it's just part of an overall, um, effort to make information more transparent and accessible for people. Just kind of, um, you know, we have this great internet utility. Let's have a great website that kind of reflects our same kind of commitment to innovation. So, yeah, it's looking great so far.
Excellent. Well done. Okay. Uh, next, let's see, uh, Tanya, maintaining levels of service for seniors during COVID. Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to brag a little bit about the fact that we have really been able to maintain most of our level of services for our seniors from client services, um, reaching out to seniors on a daily basis as well as continuing our essential services of meals on wheels, be it with less volunteers and the use of, uh, our community center staff, the library staff, the transit staff. We didn't miss a day for meals on wheels, um, including when the fires were occurring. Uh, we have also done food boxes to our local communities. And we have done drive-throughs for the seniors so that they can have some social. And we have done drive-throughs for the seniors so that they can have some socialization. We've done virtual classes with the seniors. And we've reached out and provided resources for all the seniors. So I just wanted to kind of brag on that, that we really have maintained that level of services for seniors. I think the only thing that unfortunately weren't able to accomplish were the congregate meals, which makes sense, as well as our respite program.
All right. Thank you, Tanya. Uh, let's see, Ernie, implementation of a public safety fee to hire additional officers. Anything else you want to say about that?
I just wanted to brag too.
Okay.
All the work that the mayor and the council did on this, this was an idea that was a long time ago in our previous city manager. And it was a lot of work, but I think what really, what really struck me and I, I, I've been here for quite some time. We, of all the public support that we had during that process, because it's not, it's not an easy thing for, you know, for folks to, to, to handle, even if an increase in a rate is very, you know, it seems very small to some people, but it makes a big difference. So to just see that overwhelming support after, you know, everybody worked really hard on this to make this happen. I was just very appreciative of that. And I thought it was a, a huge team effort with everybody that was involved.
All right. Excellent. Uh, let's see. Next we have Counselor Walker, 80% done on the Sandy's Parks and Trails Master Plan Amendment. And then is this John's Road viewpoint updated? Did I say that right?
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, our old Parks and Trails Master Plan was from 97. We had, you know, we went from four parks to now we have 19. Some just tot lots and small parks and stuff, but this new master plan will kind of set the stage for the next 20 years on our parks and trails. People are really excited about it. You go out walking on Tickle Creek. And when you mentioned that you're, you know, hoping to expand Tickle Creek, they all think that's just, you know, a great idea. So excited. I think there's a lot of excitement around where we go from here. And also it was just fun getting the John's Review Point kind of cleaned up and, and fixed up a little bit. So.
Excellent. Um, let's see, Counselor Pete Zild and Counselor Smallwood, you guys both have forward movement moving forward on 362nd Bell Street.
Yeah, I, there's so many other things there. I mean, I read all these and it's like already gushing with emotion, like how much we got done, right? But one of them is the 362nd. I've been working hard as well as a lot of the council and past councils to see this progress as one of the biggest assets we've been working to attain. And finally, we have some forward movement on that. And to read in there that hopefully we will have, you know, a lot more in this next coming year. So I'm just excited about that.
All right, Counselor Smallwood, anything you want to say about it?
Well, for me, it is, it's been a long time coming. It's been on the master plan for the city, I believe, since the 40s. For those of you who may not realize, it's, it's been on the master plan for a very, very long time. And for me, there's just so much that hinges on that one piece of the puzzle between, you know, increasing commercial lands to egress and pathways to, to reduce our traffic going through town. Because you're going to give everybody that's on the north side of town another direction to go. And so it, it has, there's a lot of remedies for a lot of, of, of issues that we have here locally in town. And it's also going to give us, I think, some, some, some great opportunity for progression for the future.
All right. Excellent. Let's see. Uh, next on here, Counselor Exner, you put the, I have to assume WWTP is wastewater treatment?
No, it was World War II and involvement. I'm actually going to skip that. I'm going to let the mayor, I see he's dext and he's got pretty much the same thing I was going to say. So I want to slide over to what I think was just a spectacular performance by the citizens of Sandy. I, I'm aware of people who invited those who are in the fire zones to come and live with them in their house. I'm aware of people who helped across the street from me, there was an evacuation of something like 200 and plus seniors to got them all on the buses, moved them to safe locations. I'm aware of people who went down to Les Schwabs and gave away free food to people who were needing it. I'm aware of folks who just stood up and said, I'll, I'll just take care of my neighbor. And I am so proud of our city. It just seems like we have done so many things. And I understand the complexity of disagreement and not getting the things that we want perfectly. But I just want to say, City of Sandy treated itself really nicely during all this time, not just during the fires, during the COVID, during some of the difficulties and getting everything put together for the elections. It's just big changes that we've seen around different kinds of places. And I think it's just really great for me to see that we have taken care of each other, even though there are differences, opinions. Thank you, City of Sandy.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Exner. Mayor, anything you want to say about your comments, movement towards a wetlands project? City response for COVID, moving the ball forward on transportation, any of those in particular you would highlight?
Yeah, one, I'd start with to Chief Roberts, you know, I wish I would have also put the, the police fee on there. I'm incredibly proud of us as well and the process we went through and how we did that. Wetlands project, yeah. I mean, you know, all of these is, is when the city of Sandy faces a problem, right? We get innovative and we work together, we problem solve and think outside the box. So this wetlands project is just such a great example of that. And, and how we were kind of, you know, looking down the barrel of those, this wastewater issue. And we've worked together as a team to come up with, you know, alternative sources of money and, and to push forward on this green alternative analysis that's going really good. And what we did with WFI and obtaining that loan from a staff level and council's level. Just incredible. A lot of, a lot of stuff for us to be proud of. And then on the COVID responses really is our city staff, you know, and I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to say, you know, how proud I am of us, of you and how you responded to that, you know? I say, look at a lot of the faces of the department heads on my screen here from, you know, the library and, and transit. And all, you know, just all of the different, and Tanya and her group with the seniors that she talked about and the tree lighting and just every, I mean, everything, every department and our police department. I mean, every department was affected. Public Works was greatly affected by COVID. And we just really stepped up to the plate and found alternative ways to get services to members of our community in the Sandy Library with the pickup services and, and the drive-through for the tree lighting. It just really showed as a community, you know, who we are and how innovative we are in these times and how we look out for our fellow neighbors. And then transportation, we've talked about 362nd Bell. But we also, we were really up against it on the pedestrian sidewalk project from, you know, Ten Eyck, where we went and got additional money to be able to continue that project to move forward. Pave shoulders on 362nd. And I know Carl's going to hold us accountable, but I'm telling you, buddy, in the next couple of months, those lights are going to be synchronized, man, on, on 26, right? It's happening, it's happening. And so, you know, it's just, we really tackled some big transportation issues and moved the football forward on those. And, and I just, like Jeremy said, reading, you know, everything else I don't even mention. Just really proud of the last couple of years, both on a council and staff at just community level like Carl said.
All right, we're going to do a couple more comments and then look at the big picture here. So Counselor Sheldon, you had on there some of the similar things, but anything, response, support to the community, outside communities during the fires, moving forward on the wastewater treatment plant, anything in particular you want to note?
I think the majority of it's been said. I just want to say like firsthand, I saw during both COVID. I mean, I put the wildfire, but during, because for that one really sticks in my mind because not only were we supporting ourselves, but we weren't, a lot of us weren't evacuated. So we really stepped up and helped those that had to evacuate out. And that was a pretty proud moment. So, but thank you for that. But other than that, I think a lot of it's been said. I'm really excited about our wastewater treatment plan. I'm excited that we're getting innovative with it. I think it's a great thing because it's a absolutely necessary need. And I'm glad that we're finally addressing it and looking at problems and not just kicking the can down the road and addressing them head on. I think that's great.
All right. Thank you. And then Jordan, yours was really long. So I'm going to just let you talk about any highlights from that long, long statement you typed in there.
Well,
Review coming up. If Jordan's really getting in a lot of his accomplishments.
Well, it's all been said. So mine was really, I was thinking about just everything that we have accomplished despite these challenges of 2020. And just how, the level of difficulty in getting work done is just so much more elevated. When you have staff that, you know, predominantly working from home, all these disruptions, you know, starting with COVID. But, you know, we had a rough year with the wildfires and protests in town and really contentious, you know, development. So I'm, I'm just really proud of, of staff of how much we're able to accomplish and do despite all that. And despite the circumstances of working from home and under these, you know, the stress and the fatigue from COVID that we all feel, I feel like we're in the fourth quarter. The goal line is there. We need one more drive to get there. And this is where you, you know, tend to make mistakes when you're tired and fatigued. And we just need to keep, you know, the eye on the ball and stick to the game plan. So that's kind of back to why I feel like this, going through a goal setting right now is very invigorating and can kind of give us that final push to get past this COVID stuff. So, yeah, well said, everybody. It's been, it's been quite a ride. And despite that, we've, we've done a lot. It's a lot to be proud of.
Thanks, Jordan. Yeah, Counselor Pete Zild.
Yeah, just one last thing. I noticed one of the proud things I think we did was the pay study. Because we worked on that so hard and our staff worked so hard and they have been so underpaid and not represented well the last 20 plus years. And so to work so hard and have the council behind that to show what you guys deserve, and sorry, I didn't think about it till now. But one of the things I fought for, for many years, as well as past councils. So I'm glad that that was accomplished this year to help make things right and better our city by being able to attract the talent we need to and keep the talent we have. Thank you.
Excellent. I'm going to share my screen so you guys can see this. So anybody who's not following along on Mural can see this list. But what a fantastic list of accomplishments. There's a lot there. And just to folk, just jump in on a few others that we didn't talk about. But the cross for cause and holiday cards for senior citizens and project lists and mapping on website and videos for complicated land use stuff. You know, coming together during COVID for Meals on Wheels and making sure that people have the services that they need. DEI work, working with the police department and their recruitment. And just, you know, HR, I, all the HR departments I talked to and the stuff they had to deal with during COVID, just the complexity of it was huge. So I just think you guys have so much to be proud of. And I, I don't know if looking at this, this list, if it prompts anything else you want to mention before, before we move on. But I, I just think you should all just feel a great sense of accomplishment and, and give yourselves a round of applause for the, the good work that you've done. Any final thoughts? Well, I hope this sets a good, good tone for success as, as we move through this, this work of goal setting. All right. So we have 30 minutes until we're going to take a break. And the next thing I want you to do, so as we talked about and your, both your intentions and just in the outcomes, one of the things that we want to make sure you guys come out with is being a really strong team. And part of being a strong team is getting to know one another. So I'm going to give you a couple of options for how to do this. You can just reflect on it. But I want you to think about these questions. And council, I asked you this question during your interview. So I know that you all have good coherent responses to this and look forward to you sharing them. But sharing about, I want each member of the team to talk about, a little bit about their communication style. And it's important to understand communication styles because as you move through tough conversations, somebody who might be more data driven and analytical and kind of quiet and processing information can sometimes be perceived to be disengaged. While you have others who are like to think out loud and process information out loud as it's coming to them. And, and sometimes that can feel overbearing or pushy. And so I think the more we can acknowledge our own communication styles and how we process information, I think it can help you guys as a team work through any challenging conversations. It's a good foundational thing to know about the team you're working with. The other thing, 2020 brought a lot of hard things, but it also brought some silver lining. So if you want to share a silver lining of 2020, I want you to also think about a strength that you bring to your job. We all have great strengths that we rely on to get good work done. And so share one of your strengths with us. Again, we want to think about how to leverage strengths as we move through the work. So think about a strength that you bring to this job. The other thing, just to kind of, again, get to know one another. I recently read, one of my, I've been doing a lot of reading during this, this time and read Matthew McConaughey's book called Green Lights. And it's a fun read, lots of inspiration. But one of the things that he highlights in this, in this book are bumper stickers, either bumper stickers that he came up with. So these are words to live by, insights that you've captured. So think about what's your bumper sticker? And it could be an inspirational quote that you heard from somebody else. Or it could be something completely original. And then finally, the last thing I want you to share is something near and dear to your heart. So something you're passionate about, something you care deeply about, whatever's, whatever's near and dear to your heart. So that's going to be our, our team building activity. Couple of ways you can do this. You can share your responses and we'll, we'll capture them and as you talk. Or if you want to draw a little picture and, and take a photo of it and send it to me, I will post it up on the mural board. And so you can kind of just emulate this stick person and jot down your notes. And if you want to send it either in the chat, you can email it to me. Or I'll put my, my number and my work number in the, in the message or in the chat and you can text it to me. So whatever works for you, if you feel artsy and you want to draw it and stamp a picture and send it, do that. If you just want to write down your responses and talk through, you can do that too. So this is your, this is your mission. Take a few minutes to, to write this down and then we're going to do some sharing. Now, one last thing I'll tell you, when we do the sharing, you each only get 60 seconds to share. So make sure that whatever you write down, you can talk through it quickly. And I'm going to time you because otherwise this exercise, people, we like to talk about ourselves and people can take a really long time talking through it. So those are the rules of the game. Is everybody, is everybody game for this? We had a lot of sports analogies. So I want you to take the ball and run with it. All right. And if you want, while you're working, you can turn your camera off if that takes the pressure off, do, do what you need to do. But I'm going to give you guys five minutes to work up your responses. I'll keep this screen share on so you can see it. And in five minutes, I'm either going to look for some text images or just be ready to share. Okay, you guys have about two minutes left. All right. And you guys should be wrapping up your your, either your sketches or your idea. All right. As we bring it back in, gonna stop the share here. All right. I'm going to let you guys voluntarily, just if, if we can voluntarily decide who's going to jump in and, and share in case anybody's still working on their masterpieces. So go ahead and just if you're ready, jump in and, and tell us a little more about you. And remember you have 60 seconds to take us through.
I can go, I can go first.
All right, Lori, take it away.
Throw myself on the cross. No, I'm just kidding. So 60 seconds, I can do this really fast. So I, I think a strength for me, I'm a pragmatic decision maker, which, which talks about, I think a little bit about my communication style, which is that I can be direct, sometimes to a fault. Then let's see, silver lining for 2020 is that it's going to get better. It has to. Something near and dear to my heart is solving Sandy's homeless problem. And then my bumper sticker, because I'm a progress person and I want to always be moving forward is get on the bus. And that's for you, Andy.
All right. Thanks. Thank you, Lori. Who wants to go next?
I'll take it next. Let's see if I can beat Lori here. What was that time?
She had, oh, she was right under one minute.
All right, here we go. I'm Rich Sheldon. My silver lining is I had less run around, more family time. My communication styles, I'm pretty direct, but I like to think and process things as much as I can. Bumper sticker would be I wish I was fishing. Dearest to my heart is my family and that's my entire family. And my strength is I think I'm always looking to improve and change for the better in an empathetic way.
All right. Well, let's see. Yeah, you had 30 seconds. That was pretty good. Thank you, Rich. All right. Who wants to go next?
I can go next. I won't be as quick as Richard, but I won't be as long as Lori. My communication style, I like to be visual. I, I like to see things. I like to look it out. I like to think it through too. I can't make quick decisions without being what I think of as second guessing myself. So my communication style, what I bring to the, the job, I think is I think I have been around the block a few times and I have a lot of resource background. I think I know a lot about what our resources are around the city. And if you're going to talk about a bumper sticker, I'm trying to figure out a way to say this, but I'm the old guy riding the swayback, but he's sure footed. He's got him here before. So I would get, get him out of gear again. So that's me.
All right. Thank you. Who wants to jump in next?
I'll, I'll jump in here. So Stan Poliam, like Lori, pragmatic, open and direct communicator. I believe strongly that no idea is a bad idea. So I do think out loud and sometimes during discussion, I can be talked off of a point pretty quickly because I'm thinking out loud and trying to, you know, come up with different ideas for our body. Silver lining, time, additional time with family, just getting to spend this time with family. Bumper sticker, get on the offensive, stay on the offensive. Skills, barely, I'm barely networked. I kind of understand government, how it comes together. I love helping our community get tied into resources and money and, and different influential opportunities. And then close to my heart, just my family and our community. I really want to look back on my time of public service in Sandy and really feel, feel like I did a really good job for the community I grew up in.
All right. Excellent. Good job on your timing. You guys are doing great. All right. Who wants to jump in next?
I'll go.
Okay, go for it.
All right. Jeremy is my name. Communication style is to talk or meet in person over video chat, even now with COVID, but more of a on the phone or in person versus writing or emailing. Silver lining for COVID or 2020 is COVID has moved the internet and technology fast forward 20 years in one year. You know, examples are the telehealth or work from home aspects of life that has fast forward that. Now, the strength you bring to the job, when I think of that as more of the council here is just kind of being in some ways the historian of being on for a while and kind of knowing what has happened in the past, not to relive the past, but just to know where things have come from. Something dear, near and dear to my heart, making Sandy the best place to live, work and play has always been my motto, why I am on council. Bumper sticker fibers, not just for breakfast, sanding it.
All right. Is that your, is that the slogan or should it, is that the future slogan?
I don't know. It's just funny.
I like it. Okay, Kathleen.
Yeah, my communication style is direct, honest, upfront, no hidden agendas. My close to my heart is, you know, personally, it's family and friends, but professionally and with, with City of Sandy, it's trails and parks and working with volunteers and youth and user groups to expand those and make them better. My strengths are, I've got a lot of years here in Sandy and I have a knowledge of the planning processes. I have an analytical mind and I have a passion for making Sandy awesome. Silver lining for 2020, we survived, we learned new skills and we watched a hell of a lot of TV. And my motto or bumper sticker is be the change you want to see in the world.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen. Let's see, who wants to jump in there next? Who haven't we heard from yet?
I, I can go.
All right. Don, take it away.
My communication style written is actually my preferred communication style. You'll find I stumble over my words when I'm forced to think on my feet. So I'm a terrible politician in that regard. And I'm very analytical. Strengths, once again, written, but I also love the research and the facilitation and the hearing and the exchange of ideas, especially if they're different than mine. I love to be challenged on my ideas. Near and dear to me, lots of things, but I'll just throw the pool out there. I'm sure that's a surprise to most of you. Silver lining, I like the fact that city council has been enabled for people who wouldn't otherwise come to a, the, a meeting on Monday night. So somebody can sit at their dinner table and participate in a, in a meeting. And I think that's been a real plus. Bumper sticker, I'm not creative, but I would just say I wasn't born here, but I got here as quick as I could.
All right. Thank you, Don. Let's see, who else haven't we heard from yet? You were like right on the dot. You were like one second under. Very, very good. Here's, you're doing great. Don't all jump at once or I'll start, I'll have to start calling them people.
I think all the city councillors win. Are we ready for staff?
Yeah, staff jump in here.
Okay, I'll start. Let's see, communication style, I tend to be a listener first and more of an analyzer, relater, and pride myself in getting along. And as an introvert, I tend to have to process information, but definitely can get going in a conversation. Silver lining this year, as it's been said, you know, the, the time that you have more time with family for good or bad, but, but also then the professional growth we've had through this, I would say these once in a career challenges that we've gone through over the last year. Strength, my collaborative leadership approach, I think suits a city government well, especially that city that does so many different things and different services, departments. I struggle with the bumper sticker. I thought maybe we're innovation meets elevation, but I kind of settle with that. I like just to say, you know, enjoy the journey. That's been something I had to remind myself numerous times in 2020 that, you know, you got to get through this, but try to enjoy it while you're going through it. You only get to do this once. And then things near to do, near and dear to my heart, you know, government as a force for good. You know, I'm a strong believer in that and I live it, walk it, do it every day. That's what we're here for. And then my children and then the outdoors, another reason to love Sandy too, proximity to the outdoors.
All right. Thanks, Jordan. Let's see, who do we have next?
I can go. So the silver lining is I've got a much stronger team. We've had to really communicate and it's strengthened the library team quite a bit. The strength I bring is I really care about and advocate for my staff. My communication style, I like to give or receive information in advance and then brainstorm and really talk things through to come up with solutions. My near and dear is equity and I see the library as a great tool to bring equity to the community. And my bumper sticker would be teamwork for the win.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Let's see, who's next? I saw Ernie raising his hand, the chief.
Yeah, I'll go.
All right, go for it.
So, yeah, I think my communication style is definitely, it's kind of, it's a little bit like Jordan's, it's a conscientious communication styles. The systematic, I, I need to see the processes and before making decisions and definitely risk averse, especially in my field. But I really like to see the process and everything like that and then hear that out before I make any decisions or anything like that. So I think that I bring a lot of the, I bring a lot of passion. I have a passion for the mission, the, our mission here in, in the City of Sandy. And the silver lining, I think for 2020, for me, which it, I wish it was more time with family, but for in our line, it was a little bit more busy. So we spent more time at work actually, but in, on the flip side, that made me more appreciative at that time that we have. And so let's see, what else was there? There was one more thing. Oh, this, but the bumper sticker, I would say after 2020, it would be it happens. You can put the rest of them.
Yes, the famous Forrest Gump one. Yes. Okay, let's see, who wants to jump in here next?
I can go.
All right, Angie.
So my communication style is collaborative, verbal, but also direct with empathy. That can be kind of conflicting. My bumper sticker would say you're never stronger than the moment you ask for help. Something near and dear is developing people besides family, fitness, mental health awareness. Strength I bring to the job is organizational management, strong listener and trying to find solutions to problems. I would say the silver lining of 2020 is I actually got to know the City of Sandy staff even closer than I thought possible. And that it was just a way to help people through that process. So that was the silver lining. I think that was everything.
All right. Thank you. Let's see, who do we have next? You guys are, nobody took me up on the illustration. You guys are lucky we're not in person. You'd be, I'd have markers out and you'd be drawing and we'd have a whole art gallery to walk through at this point. Okay. Who haven't I heard from? Tyler?
I'll go ahead and go. Okay, Tanya's. I'm Tanya. Um, let's see, my silver lining is that I'm thankful for my struggles because without it, I wouldn't have found my strengths. And I would say my communication style is that I'm more of an introvert. I'm observer and I'm listener, but then when I get into it, I like to process verbally and work it out as a team. And I'm passionate about improving the quality of life for people, including mostly the outdoors and exposing people to the outdoors. And what else do I have? Oh, and then something near and dear. Oh, I already said that. So bumper sticker, I just said radiate positivity.
All right. Thanks, Tanya.
All right, I can go. So communication style, probably fast paced, direct, relationship oriented. Silver lining was more time with family. I had a newborn in April, so I had sort of a weird paternity leave, but a good amount of time at home with the newborn as well as the other two. Strength is dedicated and determined to get the job done. My bumper sticker, I don't know, go ducks. That's all I come up with. And near and dear to my heart, my wife and kids.
All right. Thanks, Tyler. Who else haven't we heard from yet?
I can go.
All right, Andy.
All right. So my communication style, as I've heard a lot, I'm very process driven. I tend to collect a lot of data as much as possible actually before I jump into a decision, can look like chaos to some people, but it's my style. What's near and dear to my heart is getting people where and what they need. Strength on the job is I am a go getter. If I want it done, it gets done, period. Let's see, silver lining is, I think we've all had to think about what is essential. And that's kind of been redefined in our lives and in our workplace. And my bumper sticker, although I like Lori's better, and I think we all need one, is I do not like drama and I don't like conflict. So not my monkeys or not my circus, not my monkeys.
All right. Thanks, Ian. Let's see, who else is left?
I can go here.
Okay.
Communication style, I prefer voice unless it's after working hours and then it's either a text messenger, email, or more importantly, probably a well thought out ticket. But I like to be quick and to the point, information relevant that gets, helps make a decision or determination of something. My bumper sticker, I couldn't really be creative. It'd probably say something like student driver or something like that. And something near and dear, I got married in the middle of COVID here. So my wife and she's also right next to me. So and the silver lining is I've had more time to read, which is something I've been wanting to do and set time aside for it if it's impossible. And also everything is shut down. So I'm saving monies, which is nice. And strength in the job here, I think I'm pretty committed to what I'm doing. I believe in it. I usually try to make thorough, good decisions the first time around, if not make it easy to do better in the future and prioritizing when things shift around on an hourly basis.
All right. Thanks, Greg. Let's see, who else do we need to still hear from? Okay, Jeff.
Communication, I tend to speak in kind of big picture terms. What's the bottom line rather than elaborate on every detail, much to my wife's chagrin sometimes. Silver lining is, this was already said, I think the capability for virtual meetings is making, making participation more accessible in many ways, if we do it right. One strength I have is I'm, I'm like highly attuned to other people's points of view and I enjoy writing, which so when I do something like try to draft a statement that a group of people can support, that, that comes in handy. Near and dear to me is my kids. My daughter was outside making a tiny snowman today with the little dusting of snow that we have where I live here in the metro area. Bumper sticker, I, I went Latin. I'm going to say e pluribus unum. I really believe that diversity makes us stronger.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Good ones. Okay, anybody else?
Y'all go.
Okay.
So my, my communication style, which I think most of you realize at this point is I'm pretty assertive. Sometimes as Lori said, to a fault. I think one of my biggest strengths that I think a lot of people overlook is I'm actually a really good negotiator. And sometimes my negotiation skills are interpreted as being unfriendly or being crass.
unfriendly or being, um, crass, but I think actually it's, so a lot of times I'm trying to get the best thing for Sandy and so that can come across the wrong way. But I'm really trying to do, uh, what's best for the city. Near and dear, my three boys. Uh, my silver lining is I started to cook and bake more and make breakfasts every Sunday, uh, for dinner. And my bumper sticker, I'll probably just steal one from, uh, somebody else and probably something like, um, speak softly and carry a big stick or something like that.
All right. Thanks, Kelly. Uh, let's see, I think we still have Mike and Sarah. Is that right?
Um, y'all go. Um, uh, my communication style, verbal, uh, I, I like to think I'm succinct. I can be kind of verbose, uh, when I write things. But like, you can always go back and edit what you write. You can't edit what you say. Once it's out, it's out. Um, and I think the silver lining of 2020 is that things are never as bad as they seem. Um, my strength, I think is my memory. Uh, you should sit down with me, uh, when Jeopardy's on sometime. And, um, my bumper sticker would be go Broncos and not Boise State, however. And then my, uh, near and dear is Sandy and my family. And I'm really glad that my kids were able to grow up in a town like Sandy. I grew up in a small town. I hated it when I was a kid and then was so glad that I came back to a small town, uh, as an adult.
All right. Thank you, Mike. And then I think, is Sarah last? Did we get everybody else?
I, I already went.
Oh, you already went. That's right. All right. Did I get everyone then? Good. Um, I was, I started trying to type your responses and you guys, it was, a minute is too fast for me to capture all those things. So I will, um, I'll put a little graphic for you, together for you guys as part of the notes when I, when I check in on the recording and have a few highlights to share about, about your team. Um, at this point, before we take a break, where I'm a few minutes over with, but we're staying right on track, which is great. And I wanted to show you what the next activity is going to be because while you're on the break, I'm gonna set up your breakout rooms. And so this next piece is, uh, we're gonna shift into the context mapping. Context mapping is really helpful as we think about what's going on in the community context. I took a lot of notes during your interviews and so I will make sure that you guys don't miss anything. But I want you guys to have a chance to have these discussions in small groups to think about, um, the different challenges, different opportunities. And I put together some categories for you to help guide your conversation. So let me just go ahead and, um, show you on the mirror board where I'm at here. Zoom in. So this is the, this is where we're gonna map out the context. And I put a couple of different, uh, categories here. So one, in your interviews, we talked a lot about growth and I know that Sandy has some growth trends. I think you guys said you're the second fastest growing city in the state. Is that fifth?
You know, you, you know, it's a constant source of debate. So we say top five or among the fastest.
Among the fastest. Cause I was just in Hermiston last weekend and I think they said the same thing. So you guys, yeah, uh, somebody's gotta figure that out. But lots of growth trends happening. So I want you guys to have some conversation in your small groups about what are the growth trends that we're seeing in Sandy. Um, another thing that typically comes up in these conversations, so rather than waiting for us to come up with a category, I just put it out there. Especially now in thinking about what are some of the technology trends, um, that we might be seeing? How is it shifting services? Well, how is it, you know, shifting things in the community? So if there's any technology trends that we wanna mention, put that there. Economic climate, uh, we could probably say a lot about this. We could also probably put it down in the category of uncertainties. Um, you know, just trying to think about what is the economic climate, whether it's something directly related to the city's budget or just experiences that, that are happening, uh, just within the general economy of Sandy. Um, we have a category for what are some other community trends? So this is a place where you can think about, you know, what other opportunities or challenges are out there on the horizon. Um, then community needs, uh, again, I think it's important for you guys to reflect on going into 20, especially coming out of this last year, what, what is it that the community needs? What are you hearing? Um, one of the things that you guys do as elected officials, and I don't know if all of the staff live in the community, but you certainly have interactions with folks in the community. But what are you guys hearing out there from the community that people are expressing as needs for the future? Um, uncertainties, uh, we certainly never like to look at the dark cloud of uncertainties, but it's important to write them down because we wanna be able to plan for them for the future. So thinking about uncertainties. And then I left this other category blank for right now. I don't know if, well, if there's something specific. I looked back in the interview notes and was trying to think if there was another, another thing I should mention. Um, you guys could talk about infrastructure trends if you wanted to, uh, but the, that, that might come up in other areas. So it might come up in growth. So I just, I wasn't sure if we should have another category or just leave it open and kind of see what comes up in your conversations and we can label it later. So at this point, I'll take any suggestions if you guys have a specific category. Otherwise, I just wanted to brief you on, um, how this exercise was gonna go. So then when we come back, I'll put you in your small groups and you guys will get some time to think through your ideas. Questions about this?
Wha- what do you, what does everybody think about maybe a general term of recreation in there under the other category or something? I'm just trying to think of terminology that could capture everything from parks to the Sandy Community Campus to the Aquatic Center, right? Uh, those are major items for us, maybe just recreation. Uh, I'm up for whatever, but that's what I'm trying to capture.
Yeah. How do you guys feel about recreation trends? You can just give signify with like a thumbs up or a, I'm not sure. I'm seeing.
I'll kind of do a modified yes. Uh, I like the idea of services because it's, we, we have people that look for things that to do in Sandy and recreation is definitely one of them. I think there's other things too that help people to be able to live here, have fun here, enjoy the community. And it's a little more than recreation, but.
Recreation and services. Are you guys good with that? Okay. Excellent. Um, well, I'm gonna stop the share, so I'll give you the rest of your instructions when we get back before I put you in your small groups. But for right now, uh, why doesn't everybody take five minutes? Get up, move around, um, get a snack or something and I will see you back here at seven forty-two. All right. Everybody should be making their way back here. Wait till I see, uh, that we at least have all the counselor videos on. Has everybody been on Zoom all day or is this anybody first meeting of the day?
All day.
All morning and now Zoom this evening.
Zoom, zoom, zoom. Um, all right. Got Lori back. Kathleen, are you? There she is. Okay. Excellent. Um, so I'm gonna break you guys into your small groups. So there's gonna be, it works out great because there's 18 of you. So we'll have six in each. I'm gonna break you into three groups. There'll be six of you in each. Um, I've tried to move, disperse the counselors around. So there's, and there's two in each, except one, one group will have three. And so you're gonna just start to gather up the ideas, uh, based on what's in these, the categories that I described for you. Um, somebody in the group needs to take notes. Uh, it works, I, at best, if you, if somebody types it and then can copy and paste it into the chat, that'll make it really, uh, that will expedite our process as I'm putting the ideas on the map and mural. So, um, but I can also type fast. So if you just, as long as somebody is taking notes, that is the most important part. Um, any questions about how we're gonna do this? I'm gonna give you guys 15 minutes to start and I'll jump in, into your groups to check on you to see if you, if there's any clarifying questions as you're moving through the exercise. And I'll also gauge how we're doing on time. Sometimes we, every, every, it'll be like, oh, we covered it all. Hold on, somebody's not on mute. Um, okay. Anyhow, I'll check in and see if we need more time and we'll adjust, adjust accordingly. I have an hour allocated for this exercise. So, um, I think we should have plenty of time, but let's, let's see how far we get in 15 minutes and then, um, we'll see if we need to add more. Everybody sound good?
So Sarah, just to clarify, when we're taking notes, if we take it in the chat, do we lose our ability to send to everyone when we're in a breakout room? Or can we still send to everybody participating on this?
Uh, so when you're, yes, when you're in a breakout room, your chat is only gonna show up in that room and I won't, I get it as the meeting facilitator after the fact. But so I recommend that you just take it in like a word document or something else. Um, and then copy and paste it into the, into the group chat so that we can, so that we can get it or I can get it is the most important part. So I can put it on the board.
I apologize. You may have said this and I missed it, but are we ca- are we grab, doing each category separately? It's like 15 minutes with growth and then moving on after that?
No, I'm gonna give you guys 15, 15 minutes to just map out ideas in all the categories.
Okay.
So see, uh, see how far you get in 15 minutes, um, with six people in the group. My guess is we'll probably need more time. But I'll just know that within that first 15 minutes, I'll check on you and see how far you're getting.
And this should be like sticky notes, like if we did it in person, not, not long paragraphs, just like
Yes.
topic ideas, right?
Yep, topic ideas. Help us kind of see the big picture. Don't, you don't have to get too in the, in the weeds on it. Um, all right. Other questions? These are all really good questions. Okay, the last thing I'll mention, once you're in the breakout groups, is that if you need something, there's a button at the bottom that says, I think it's like message, meeting host or message or ask for help. Um, and that, that will message me. So I know to come in and check on your group. Okay? All right. I'm gonna open the rooms. So here you go off into virtual, it's kind of Harry Potter-esque when you guys go into your rooms. Here we go.
I feel all alone.
Did it ask you to go into a room? It says, it just says that you haven't joined yet.
No. Oh, maybe. Hey.
You got it?
Maybe.
All right. All right. And not just for seniors, but for kids or, you know, all, you know, and, and like you already said, staff as well, you know?
And then what additional strain does that put on your workforce when we're back to normal?
Right.
With the added expectations?
Well, and then also addition to that is like, how do we attack? And this could be kind of community needs, the mental health piece as far as that as well as socialization. I mean, I guess it's all tied together with your programming and how you're going to adjust to those needs of the community.
And that's so huge, right? Especially for what you do, Tanya, because I got to imagine like there's a lot of people that use their services that may not want to return or have high anxiety to returning in person. Yet that it's important that they still socialize, even if they don't want to. So finding ways, yeah. Yeah, it would have transitioned we're about to go into. And then I think of our Sandy City, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
No, just, I just want to check in. How's, how's it going? You guys are about halfway through your 15 minutes already. Yeah, are we?
We're about a third, maybe a quarter.
Okay. All right. We'll definitely be allocating more time and checking with the other groups. And then I'll send everybody a message. So you kind of know what to expect, but keep, keep it moving. I know there's lots of things to share, but do your best to try to move through those categories as you can. Okay?
All right. Thanks.
Good luck.
I'll be quiet then, but I'll just say Jeff.
There are some.
One of the things I think about growth and that's that, that as technology and as people develop different kinds of needs, that you see different kinds of businesses coming up. I remember listening to somebody tell me that they wouldn't, there were codes in the city that about noise level from ping pong machines or not ping pong, but the, the, oh, shoot, the, the machines that make noise when you, when you're in communication, if you're doing recreation. But really I could hear more people talk about their animals, small animals. So veterinarian facilities are becoming more popular and they're more needed. And so there, there's some changes in the way people look at life at this point. And technology is got a good thing and a bad thing in that there are some people just resist technology completely. I, I have a couple of clients that don't even have voicemails, let alone emails or text messages. How do you deal with people like that? And then there are people who just can't deal with anything but the text messages.
Hey guys, just checking in. How, how are you guys doing and moving through your categories? You're over halfway through already your 15 minutes. So maybe allocating more time, but just, I would just wanted to kind of gauge where you're at.
Doing good. We're bouncing around a little bit, but I think that's to be expected.
Okay. All right. Well, just, I'll send a message out after I check in with the last group and see how much more time we think we need. But yeah, just keep bouncing around. Make sure you guys get some ideas down for each one and then we'll build on that as a group together as well. All right. Keep it up.
Thanks. I think, I think my thing that I brought up.
Time. Why don't we move on? Oh, hey, Sarah.
Hey guys, how's it going?
Well, we just got through growth trends.
Okay.
We could sit there forever, but we're trying to move forward.
All right. Well, you guys, your initial 15 minutes is almost up. So I'll definitely be giving you guys more time. We'll probably take about another 15 minutes before we come back as a group. But I just want to be able to, so you guys can kind of gauge how to, how to make the conversation flow so that you at least hit all the areas. If you, if only for a brief moment to share a few ideas. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Good luck.
All right.
This is the part where it's Harry Potter-ish.
Yes.
Coming back on and populating the screen.
Yes. Welcome back, everybody. I'm so glad you made the transition. All right. How were your group conversations? Good? Do you guys cover a lot of ground?
Yeah.
All right. Awesome. I'm looking forward to hearing what you guys came up with.
Sarah, can you remind me, should I email this list to you or what's the best way?
Either way, you can email it or place it in the chat, whatever's most convenient for you. I've got, I've got so many screens up, I will find it in one of them.
And where would your email be for those that took notes? They could email you that.
I will place it in the chat to make that really easy to find. There you go. So Jeff, since yours are coming over first, why don't we start with your group for a report out?
Okay, let's see here. So just, yeah, so just start reading. We have a lot. So just reading through it.
Yeah, let's start in. Let's pick a category.
Okay.
Let's start with growth trends. I just saw it come through. So I'm going to copy those and I'll get them up. And so if you guys want to, so Jeff, you sent them. And why, you know, from the group, you guys can decide who's going to kind of, you can, you can share the responsibility of reporting out. So don't make Jeff, just because he typed the, the responses, don't make him share the whole thing. You guys can share the love.
Well, yeah. So, and then though I don't think they have the list, so.
Jeff, I think you got this, brother.
Yeah. All right.
Can you tell us who is in your group? I'd like to know who was in your group. Are you group, are you group number one or five?
Represent.
Don, Tanya, Jeff, take it away, Jeff.
All right. So in growth, much of the growth is younger families and first time home buyers. We're seeing more office white collar workers. We're a bedroom community in transition. Lot, there's lots of community dialogue about growth, obviously. The phrase escaping Portland was coined. Growth is creating a strain on infrastructure as we know. And just this whole idea that, you know, you don't have to live close to work anymore in this post COVID world. And perhaps that's something that will remain going forward.
All right.
So that should be live close to work, not love.
Oh, all right. Got it. Okay. Let's see, which one do we, let's tackle technology next.
Okay.
Got those.
Obviously we have increased reliance on smartphones and the internet and everything we do. And we anticipate that post COVID, we're probably going to see a lot of this virtual integration remain. And especially in some of our departments, you know, we've got the, the app for transit, for example. You know, government is perhaps slowly, but now finally realizing the importance of mobile smartphone technology. Local businesses are increasingly transitioning workforces to remote working. And that's probably not going away, at least not totally. And there is a technology gap, but there's one thing that we talked about, you know, when we're talking about senior services, for instance, there's still a group of people that has needs, but maybe isn't totally online and, and maybe needs a little bit of extra help.
Okay, let's, let's shift down then to recreation services.
Okay. There was a recognition, people are moving here to be closer to the outdoors. That's not surprising. Going forward, we're probably going to see, this was an important one. You know, there's, there's going to need to be a hybrid going forward after COVID, right? Of virtual and in-person services. And how do you meet the needs of, of both groups? We're really going to have to rethink how we do business and how we provide those services to make sure everybody's taken care of. We're going to need to be nimble and certain, as, as we said. More opportunities, this was an idea, there's probably going to be an opportunity to provide more activities year round, even in the wet months. Find a way to do that outside. While we're in this world still. Services that are relying on usage fees and, you know, we have certain departments where, you know, they're not receiving revenue. And that, that creates a serious budgetary problem. And then, you know, our group was really big on, what are we going to do about community events? We really need to be doing these events, but how do we do them in a way that's fiscally sustainable?
All right. And then let's shift up to economic climate here.
Okay. Well, you know, there was a recognition that all of this really plays into the economic climate. But a few points of detail. You know, we just talked about the city government is doing relatively well during this time, especially compared to some other sectors. But you know, we did start to worry and wonder, you know, are we, you know, is there recession on the way? Or, or further or worse than it already is? We just, there's uncertainty there. Tourism, obviously extremely important to our economy. How do we get people to stop here? And that's something we've done in other categories.
Okay. And then let's do other community trends.
We talked about homelessness. We talked about remote, remote work and remote school. The contentiousness that we're seeing, social, political division, what are we going to do about that? How do we move forward from that? And then, you know, sustainability, resiliency, obviously very important.
All right. And then last, or not last, we still have two more categories. Let's shift to uncertainties.
Um, you know, growth is creating a strain on infrastructure. We've already said that. Childcare needs, except what is that going to look like? If more people are working from home, like what it, obviously there's a need, but what's that going to look like? What's the end game of COVID? How's that going to play out? There's a lot of possibilities there. You know, going to need to remain nimble. Economic disparity, you know, we talked about that and that's only gotten worse through the pandemic. So, you know, that's definitely something that we're going to need to be thinking about. However, it's not all bad. We also talked about some of this uncertainty presents an opportunity to reimagine how we do business, how we provide services, reimagine kind of the old fashioned workings of the city. What's the path forward for the community campus? Obviously that's a big elephant in the room. And then, you know, this idea that we've got a lot of newer people have moved here more recently. They may have different expectations, maybe high expectations for services if they came from larger jurisdictions. And how are we going to meet their expectations or how do we deal with that? Especially if there are fiscal constraints on the horizon possibly.
Okay. And then last, community needs.
Community needs. I lost my mouse. Hold on one second. Oh, that's a bad time for that to happen. All right.
I've got it up on the screen share.
Okay, thank you. As we said, for the third time, strain on infrastructure, we've got transportation needs. You know, we talked a little bit about youth and, you know, we just have, we know, we don't have people who haven't been in school, how are they going to socialize? There's no good space. We need to be thinking about their needs as well. We're, you know, obviously business failures due to COVID, you know, we've had these, you know, we've wanted these different businesses and services in town. And actually now we're seeing businesses go away. It was a, you know, it's a huge hurdle. There's a gap. Well, yeah, what we just talked about, you know, we may want certain businesses, but what's economically viable? We talked about the difference in desires between newer residents and long time residents. There may be a need to adjust there. We need to find ways to get people to stop here in town. We talked a lot about that. You know, this idea of Sandy ought to really, here we have a small town at the base of the mountain. We ought to, we specifically talked about, we ought to dominate the holidays. We ought to have like events and really bringing people here. Making complementary investments, you know, like community campus is a big deal, but that, there might be some synergy there. If you build it the right way, that can also serve to attract people here. And then we talked about again thoughtful transportation expansion through 62nd and Bell being an example of that.
Okay. Any questions for our first group here on their report out? Or any points of clarification about that conversation? Not seeing any. Okay. All right. Let's see. I saw Kathleen's email pop up next. So does that group one, you guys group two was Counselor Walker and Counselor Exner and then Jordan, Greg, Sarah and Kelly? Who's going to report? Who's gonna report? I've got Kathleen's notes, so I'll, I'll populate those, and then who's gonna talk, talk us through them?
I can do it, since I took the notes and just know what I wrote.
With technology, Kathleen, I'm gonna put those in first.
Okay.
And I'll share.
Technology trends, and some of this, I apologize, is probably repetitive from what Jeff just listed. Technology trends, we said that future office space needs may change, there's push to work from home now. That may boomerang in the future with employee pushback or need for more collaboration, but it, it may take a while for that boomerang to come back. There's more technology and transit options, self-driving cars and things that may change how, how we live. The electric vehicles are probably gonna become more prevalent, prevalent. And 5G technology, Greg brought, brought the importance of 5G technology gonna be more present in our situation, in our town.
Okay, thanks Kathleen, let's jump into economic next.
Economic trends, there was, some of that was, again, kind of focusing a little bit on the growth, but there was a push to move to larger homes out to the rural areas with good internet, more shared office spaces is probably gonna be a, a focus of some businesses that they've realized they can kind of do without individual offices, and so there's gonna be a push for more shared office space.
Okay, and then down to community needs.
Um, there's a push for folks to move out of the city into less dense areas. You know, that's kind of what we're seeing, if people are moving out here to try to kind of get, you know, get out of Portland. Sandy will continue to grow more diverse. Sarah brought that up, great point. With more Hispanic and more Russian and other folks that English may not be their first language. There's, Kelly brought up the fact that there's, you know, with the aging boomer populations, and I resemble that remark, is that there's more assisted, need for assisted living and medical needs with the aging boomers, and there's still a need for childcare facilities and senior services. And there was also a mention of, that's not on there, but you know, possible more medical, you know, hospital clinic type needs.
Okay. Let's see, and do you want me to add that to it?
Sure.
Hospital clinic type needs. Okay, and then let's talk, you guys had one for recreation services.
Yeah, like some, like Jeff kind of said, you know, people are kind of expecting the amenities. They, they like what we offer, and I think they want more, increasing the amenities that we offer for parks, trails, teens, including after school activities. Seniors classes for those, those groups, community center expansion, recreation leagues, gym, gyms, pool, sports fields, skate parks, technology competitions, things like that. So having the infrastructure and the programming to, to address those increased needs.
Okay, and then what about up here, growth trends?
There's still, you know, we're still gonna continue to see high demand as a bedroom community. We're seeing more young families move to Sandy, we think. We, there's a demand for, you know, we've kind of got a fairly good supply of the starter homes, but what we've identified in the past is the need for kind of the one step up or larger lot homes. There is a recognition that we're, we're gonna be forced by the state legislature to become more dense, higher density. You know, there's a recognition that, that local land use planning is now starting to be done on a statewide basis. We, we need to be creative to ensure we define our desired future condition and consider, and, and there's a need to make more land available for housing opportunities. That, you know, obviously a limited resource becomes, you know, if we really wanted to make it affordable and meet these needs, we need to make more land available.
All right, and then over here, other community trends?
Sarah brought up a good point about, I think it was Sarah, that, you know, Sandy needs social services, childcare, living wage jobs and skill building opportunities. There's still also a need to address traffic issues and infrastructure. Car exhaust, pedestrian safety. More vegetation along high traffic areas.
All right, and then last one we have here is uncertainties.
There was a, a kind of a comment about needing to address, you know, fire management, with especially in light of climate change and urban fire interface. We saw that, you know, this summer. And also how climate change affects our water supplies. And somewhat related to that is kind of our, some concern about the uncertainty of our bull water, bull run water treatment needs, you know, that we may be on the hook for, you know, when, when they go, if they go with a full treatment, that the price tag for that with the, the reduced number of customers that appear to be dropping out and finding other water sources. That's an uncertainty. We don't know how, how Portland's water supply will, that we are a part of is going to change and how we're gonna be affected by that.
Okay, all right, anything? Our group two, or any questions for group two? Not seeing any, everybody seems to be moving along here. All right, next group then, we have group three. Which included Lori and, well, everybody else, but Lori and Jeremy and Richard were all, were the three counselors that were in that group. Who, who took notes from that group?
Mike did.
Yeah.
I did, I emailed them to you.
You did, okay, let me. I did not see those come through. Do you wanna try sending them one more time?
Mike's contact list and his email is probably like 300 Sarah's for the length of time he's been with the city of Sandy, so. Could've went to any of those.
Could be. There's no H in it, sometimes that'll throw people off. You guys can start talking through them, though, if somebody has. But you probably need the, the written version to recall. Let me make sure it didn't go into my junk mail. No?
I did take some handwritten notes, so just the rest of our group, just chime in, please, if I forget something.
All right, and we'll see if Mike's email pops up, I'll keep an eye on it.
And then we can clear the two of our notes, that will be hysterical. Um, okay, growth trends, I'm just gonna kind of go through these, Sarah, so there's homeless, affordable housing. Looking at the comp and transportation study again, I mean, going into more detail, making it more current. The traffic issue, livability. Economic development. Oregon land use, I can't remember why we brought that up, somebody's gonna have to remember what that was. Move up home, same thing that others have talked about, walkability. And maintaining and taking care of city assets and maintenance. So that was under growth trends, technology trends.
Don't forget transportation.
I did, I know, there was one I missed right before, I think walkability, was it transportation?
It could be. So did you get the notes?
Yeah, you know what, they just came through, there they are.
Look, all right.
That was, that was a good start, though, here we go. So I'll fill in the, I'll fill in the other ones on growth in a second. Let's do, I'm gonna put technology up there, and somebody can talk us through the technology. Make this smaller, make some more room. Okay, here we go. Oh, and I should share it, so you guys can see what I'm doing. Sorry about that. Okay, go, if somebody wants to talk through technology, here's your, your notes on that.
Jeremy, I think you should do that.
Oh, okay, well, continue what we're doing with SandyNet and growing the technology, obviously, we recognize technology and what SandyNet does is kind of a lot in the same. The reduced law enforcement demands and traffic enforcement by putting in types of technology in our city to help with that. Maybe it's with the automation of cameras or speed signs, or even we're just with paperwork and getting that done. Trying to make sure I keep public information officer and department, because with technology and the social media and all the technology that goes along in today's age, that we are there, needing to have that dedicated type of individual that is really good at doing that. And then wifi on transit or buses, which is in the process of going on right now, but expanding that for e-fairs, paying with your phones and driving, drivers gathering data on tablets. Kind of getting rid of that paper theme and being more efficient with the technology.
Okay, and then you wanna take us through economic climate or somebody from that group?
Where did ours start?
Yours started right here with growth and economy are linked.
Okay, cuz they're all getting to be, we have a common theme here, so we can share each other's thoughts on this. Economic, the growth and economy are linked. As the city grows, our economic taxes coming in and fees and things like that will go increase as well, giving us a stronger economic climate. Sustainable growth, fiscal responsible growth pays for it itself. By understanding that we need to kind of grow, I made the comment of cities are all like Ponzi schemes. And then work from home, recognizing that we're gonna be doing a lot more work from home in the economic climate. And what that will look like in, for our businesses in our community around us. The city develops property for economic development purposes. And it being proactive like several other cities with our vacant lots or buildings that are, are kind of kind of in disrepair, taking those overs and flipping them, making them in what we want the city to kind of, through our community action. Because no one has done that or can afford to kind of take on that risk. And employment growth in Sandy addresses other issues like transportation, internal growth and moving, moving in or moving up in, in our community. Did I hit all that, everyone, today?
Looked good, sounds good.
All right, you're doing great. The next one here, you just had these last two points on the, the other community trends.
Climate change will drive immigration from hot and dry areas to cool and wet areas, as we see the climate changes. As we all know, that's why we live here, it's a great, amazing place to live with, we don't have tornadoes and other 150 degree weather. People will be commuting, or not commuting, just migrating here from other parts of the country. And seeing that as a trend, reducing criminal penalties for street drugs will drive growth, affect demand for services. It was reminded to us here in a month or so that we'll be the only state in the union that has legalized harder drugs, and that will create a burden on our community and trends on our community, and recognizing that and how we work with that.
All right, and then let's see, you guys had services, I'll populate your responses here. Okay.
So, a lot around our community campus and services there, and how that can be a combination of things that can happen with inside that, but people are willing to pay for the public amenities, encouraging, you know, whether it's the parks districts and those type of things to be, have things that, as mentioned before, other, moving from other communities that have these great amenities like Westlands and Wilsonville's and Lake Oswego's, Happy Valleys to our area, and then needing that, recognizing there, it needs to, money needs to come from those and, and how to get that, whether it's a district or some other types of fees. And having a place for basketball courts and fields and those things, or some recreation services, wetland treatments, wastewater can be an amenity. Water will be available, valuable resource in the future as our climate changes, but then also what we, can we do with our wetlands that we have? We create from that, and how will that intertwine with our recreation and services that we have?
Okay, and almost there, two more categories. We have the, yours started, I think, down here with this new community center on community needs.
Yeah, just kind of the, the same thing as the recreations, you know, basically cut and paste. Community center is community needs for all the same things we just talked about, gym space, ball fields and meeting spaces. We're really lacking meeting spaces in our community. And bigger meeting spaces, as our community grows, our meetings are, are bigger than they were before, or the needs from that, from our community, especially if people working from home. And looking for that space to get away from the family, video conferencing, office spaces for that, better childcare capacity, as we've learned the last couple of years, how as our community grows, the dire need for that childcare in our community, if we're gonna really have a great place to live, work and play here. A walkability slash run ability community. And their trails and, and other aspects of our community, making sure we can have that, and then living wage jobs, manufacturing jobs. As our climate has changed, as we've seen, a lot of businesses going out of business or just changing from now as a worldwide thing, more online Amazons of the world and those type of things. And, and what does that look like for, and how do we pivot and change and, and seeing manufacturing in our community and having things created here, and we send those things out to the world.
All right, and uncertainties, you guys ran out of time, so you don't have to report on that one.
We don't have any uncertainty, so.
You're very certain about the future.
Yeah, we are.
All right, and looking at this, I know that's a lot of notes and it looks kind of small right now. I will, I'll do some transformation on that to, when I send out the notes, so that it's clear to everybody. But any, any themes that jump out to you in looking at this? What are some of the major themes that we heard?
I think there's a theme amongst all of them of how 2020 has affected each one of these things, and when I say that, the COVID living at home, working at home, going to school at home, and how's that has changed so much than what we would have thought in 2019. So just an observation, not down to the core of it, but it's in every one of them.
Yeah, I, I mean, you guys have been really kind of thinking about how, how it's transformed, and I think that, I think that's a good thing as you go in. Especially as we think about the work ahead of us, when we're gonna be talking about your vision and just really thinking down the road, what, what you wanna see, what other themes?
Yeah, I mean, to Jeremy's point, just to play off of that, it's just, you know, it's this crazy transition that we're in, but not just us, we're in the transition just because of our growth, right? But where we were pre-COVID, what we are now is a result of COVID, and then what the world's gonna look like in all these services and parts of our community after COVID. I mean, that's kind of the common theme I'm hearing, is just the state of transition on how we're going to deliver services and the services that our community's going to demand from us in different ways.
I, I see a add-on theme in that, is that I wonder if the 2020 hasn't affected us so much that we're not looking at what the future will be. Admittedly, it'll affect us from what we've seen this last year, but that's been just one year out of, but we've been incorporated for over 100 years. I wonder how we should not be missing what the future could be, even without having to spend so much time on the COVID and the fire situation that happened this past year. Secondly, is, is that I see a lot of needs for doing different things, but then the economic restraints on the side that holds that all back, so. Lots of things that we would love to do, but because of our size, our fast-growing situation, the different kinds of people that are coming to our community, all that sort of thing is is in conflict with the amount of finances and the ability to take care and pay for those things.
Yes, the struggle of many local governments. What, what else? Other themes that are jumping out? These are good, you guys are off to a good start here.
I think there's a huge. I think there's a huge livability in each one of these. We obviously think about livability in our community and that we're going through growing pains regardless of the COVID or not. And we're at a perfect pivotal point in our size. I think that, you know, we haven't, because of COVID, you know, there's a lot of things that we aren't too deep in the trenches for something that may have devastated our community by losing out on. We have a lot of that, but as for one type of industry per se. But on the other side of it, we gives us a chance to be able to pivot out of it and pivot into something new quickly where other communities may not be able to do that. Also, in that growing pains, I think of a, in a lot of these things, what people want, we're at that size now where we're grown. We're like a teenager. I have a teenager, you know, the pants are a little high water-ish and, you know, we need to now change that out and fit our own size that we're, we're getting to. And so how do we get there? I don't know. That's not the answer, but I see that throughout the themes there that we, we need to adjust for the size and not only that, you know, buy the pair of pants that are a little bit longer because we're going to grow into them. Crazy analogy. Sorry, I have kids.
That's all right. It's, it's making sense. I think it's, I see a couple of smiles around the, the squares here, so I think it's connecting. What else? Other themes?
I think we need innovation is a theme in that a lot of these issues are things that at our direct level are out of our control. But we have to be innovative in our response to them. And that goes from everything from the house business that the state's pushing down to homelessness to climate change to everything that's kind of been listed here. It's going to take some out of the box thinking as a response, but we can't necessarily control the actual act.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that there was, you know, a kind of a recognition that people are moving out to Sandy to kind of escape Portland and Gresham and those, those, you know, the issues that they see there. And so I think, you know, I saw that fairly frequently mentioned. And so I want to make sure that we're able to kind of protect that those, that kind of unique living experience, kind of livability that people are looking for. It's going to be hard because like I said, that the statewide approach to local land use planning is going to be, you know, they're developing all these solutions based on what's needed in Portland and then applying it one size fits all to everybody. And so there's going to be all these kind of very heavy-handed forces trying to kind of put us into, you know, a square box when we really want to be a round hole. So we're going to have to really be creative on how we maintain that livability that people are moving here for.
All right. Other themes that you guys want to mention?
I want to, I think I hear everybody is accepting the fact that we are going to grow and that there is a need to recognize that and to be able to meet that. Understand where we're going to be able to touch the people that are coming into our community. The opposite would be if we felt like we needed to constrain or reduce or, or limit. But I don't hear that. I hear people saying things like, here comes the crowds. We need to find solutions for all those crowds.
Yeah, that's a, that's an interesting, like just observation. Would everybody agree with that, the council? It seems like there's some acceptance of the fact that just this fact that growth is happening and we're in, in the, looking towards the future, figuring out how to, how to manage it in a way that, that protects some of the things that you're talking, that provides and protects the unique identity.
I would agree.
One, I, I am for, for this part and maybe for the, the future workshops, if you guys could raise your hands that way, it, it makes it less awkward when everybody starts to jump in and I can, I can call on people. We haven't needed it yet. Okay, Mayor and then Carl.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Did I forget what I was gonna, oh, okay, I remember. So. So what I would say is, is that we have, we have supply and demand. We have a lot of demand to come to Sandy, right? But we, we can control the supply, meaning, you know, we want it to make sure that our community, while people want to come to Sandy and we want people in Sandy, but we, we've got to, you know, grow in the right way and maintain kind of the sense of who we are and to grow intentionally instead of just having it kind of sprung on us. And sure, there's a lot of factors outside of our control, but I, I think we need to be very intentional with the factors that are within our control.
Yeah. Counselor Exner, what did you want to add to that?
On the same theme there, I was going to say that a lot of this growth is all about, from what I hear, the words could be smart, it could be intentional, Mayor used, technologically correct, speaking to the people that are coming. Those are the kind of words that we need to be thinking about rather than just growth for growth's sake.
Okay. Anybody else want to add to that about growth? Yes. Counselor Hopkinson?
Well, sorry, I was moving past growth, so my bad.
Yeah, no, that's okay. If you're ready to move past growth, if I see Counselor Smallwood, did you have something on growth that you wanted?
Yeah, just, I think one of the things that seems to be kind of a continual theme throughout everybody's is the recognition that we need more commercial or manufacturing jobs to go with that.
Okay. Counselor Hopkinson, you want to move us on to another theme that you picked up on?
Yeah. So looking across everything, the one thing that's obvious to me is we don't want to be average. So many of those things that we're putting out there are very aspirational, that we want to be maybe exceptional. And that, that's, you know, that's very aggressive. I think that's a theme that, that we should, we can latch on to as we start defining what is quality of life mean in an exceptional town? What is our downtown experience supposed to, what do we want it to be like? Do we want it to be like Lagos? Do we want it to, you know, what are we looking for? And I think that's probably something we can address even at a very high level policy and it will overarching over many of these, these themes.
I, I love that comment and thinking about the exercise we're going to do tomorrow with the visioning. So I'm glad, again, these exercises really build on each other so that you can take these comments and think about your, the vision for the future. Other final thoughts on the themes here? I feel like you guys did a great job on your context map and I was looking back during the conversations at your interview notes and I don't feel like you missed any of the main topics that we, that we covered. I didn't get a chance to read through the thousand pages of notes staff sent out today, but staff is, if there's anything in there related to context, do you feel like we missed anything? Any big themes that were missed? Seeing heads.
Can I, can I add something as a staff member? Just general observation is, I, I think something that was very, that I heard from all three speakers from the different three groups was that because of Zoom and technology, the world's getting smaller. And, you know, airplanes and, you know, first it was railroads and then it was, or boats, then it was railroads, then it was automobiles. Then it was planes and now it's the internet. And I think we're really poised to be really good at that because of Sandy Net. And I think that's a really, it's a feather in our cap and I think we should take advantage of that.
Yeah. Excellent point. Again, you guys are, there's a lot of cities around the state that are very envious of, of that position. Okay, we've got five minutes left. I just, how's everybody feeling? Let's do a quick check out. Just how's everybody feeling right now about the process so far? I know being virtual in the evening, it, it can be, it can feel hard and maybe feel kind of long and maybe you guys had a long day and are feeling a little tired, but I feel like you really brought your A game to these conversations and really stuck with it. So I, I feel like you're on the right, right track to be able to build on this work tomorrow when we continue it. Any thoughts? Reflections?
I just want to say thanks. I love dreaming. I'm a big dreamer. But, you know, it just gets the ideas flowing and I love hearing other people and coming together in a common dreaming session, whether it's our goals or context maps and those type of things as we think about our community. And so this gets me excited, you know, starting off with the new counselors on our group and how we're going to be pivoting and changing. And I love the ideas that each one of us, new and old are bringing on with staff. And so it's a, it's a great way to end of the night. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment. Anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah, I would just thank everybody for your participation tonight. I thought it was very useful. It was a great exercise to get everybody kind of into the breakout sessions and stuff. And I just really appreciate, I, I agree, Sarah. I think everybody brought their A game and, and heard a lot of good ideas and we're certainly a community in transition, aren't we? So they're going to need a really strong council and, and staff and a team here at Sandy to really kind of take us through it. And a lot of the stuff I'm hearing tonight and stuff, I'm really excited about. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow.
Excellent. Any other final comments from the group? All right. Well, I just, again, want to thank you for your engagement and participation. I just want to share. So I'm looking at our agenda for tomorrow. So we'll do a quick recap of tonight's discussion, just to kind of reorient you to the context map. I will send, I'll clean up these graphics and get those out to you as early as I can tomorrow morning. So that way you can have a chance, if you do, if you do get a chance throughout the day to just glance at it, reflect on it for a second. Because tomorrow I'm going to be asking you to, I'm going to break you into small groups again, and you guys are going to work through this visioning exercise. You're going to be thinking about the community 20 years from now. And I think you touched on a lot of really like key phrases and points that are going to help you in that exercise and that conversation, come up with some really cool visions. So just to give you a preview, it's, you'll be do, imagining that there's like a headline from the future. So you'll think about Sandy being published in some publication. I mean, it could be the New York Times or I don't know what, what you read. Some, just imagine some big national publication. Sandy's being featured for how awesome it is. And I want you to think about what the headline is going to be for that. And then you'll kind of think of the sub-headlines and what's the buzz on social media? I mean, I don't even know if newspapers will be a thing in 20 years, but let's just pretend that it is. And, and what's the story? What are, what are people saying about Sandy? And so again, I want to just kind of plant the seed for that, because you had a lot of really good phrases and, and things that you shared in your context mapping exercise and, and you might just feel inspired in the middle of the night. So as you go to bed, have that little piece of paper next to, next to the bed. And when, when you wake up with that, that dream, that spark of insight, make sure you jot it down. Don't lose the thought. So we'll be doing that visioning exercise. From that, you're going to also start to see the ideas emerge. It's going to segue right into that idea mapping exercise. Because as you're talking about the, the vision, the stories, then you're going to start to see those goals start to emerge. The, what, what happened that moved us towards that headline? So we'll get into that idea mapping exercise and, and that'll, that'll be our, that'll be tomorrow night's work session. So be ready for that. It's really fun. I think you guys are going to enjoy it. Any questions? All right. You guys are really good. We're right on time. So great job in sharing and learning more about each other and looking forward to connecting with everybody again tomorrow.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, nice.